Good evening, and I'm calling the public meeting at the Board of Education for Wednesday, May 24th to order. The Richmond Board of Education acknowledges and thanks the First Peoples of the Hunkamunum Language Group on whose traditional and unceded territories we teach, learn, and live. And recognition of visitors, we have two. Liz Baberstock, the President of Richmond Teachers Association, and Mr. Tim McCracken, the Vice President of Richmond Teachers Association. So, welcome. We're so glad we have someone in the gallery. We have a couple of announcements from trustees. I'm looking trustee Larson.
Thank you. Good evening. June is National Indigenous History Month. In the month of June, Canadians celebrate National Indigenous History Month to honor the history, heritage, and diversity of indigenous peoples in Canada. National Indigenous History Month is a time for learning about, appreciating, and acknowledging the contributions First Nations, Inuit, and Métis people have made in shaping Canada. On Tuesday, June 21st, aligned with the Summer Solstice, all are invited to participate in events that will take place to honor indigenous peoples across the country. As reflected in the board's strategic plan, indigenous people's history, perspectives, and learning approaches are embedded within district planning and practices as students are provided with authentic opportunities to learn about, respect, and engage with indigenous cultures. Indigenous History Month is a reminder of our shared responsibility to honor, uplift, and amplify indigenous voices in pursuit of truth, understanding, and reconciliation. Thank you.
And trustee Yang.
Thank you, Chairperson. Good evening. Every year, the Richmond School District recognizes and supports Pride season from June through September. Pride season is a time when we celebrate the diversity within our district and the LGBTQ+ community. It is also a time to acknowledge the history of the community, the hardships they have endured, and the progress that has been made. While there are a number of Pride events that occur during the summer months in local communities, there are also many initiatives that occur throughout the year. This year, the first in-person Rainbow Network event for staff took place, an opportunity to connect and reflect upon how to support LGBTQ+ colleagues throughout the district. In addition, student leaders have participated in Rainbow Cafe events and have been busy planning a Pride party this June. There will be a Carnival theme with an opportunity for LGBTQ+ youth and allies to connect. Many school alliance groups are also involved in creating displays or other events this month to raise awareness about Pride as well. There will be a Richmond contingent of staff, students, parents, and community members participating in the annual Vancouver Pride Parade in August. We also look forward to additional Rainbow Sidewalk installations at some elementary and secondary sites this summer. Our district would like to acknowledge the LGBTQ+ communities and their allies, recognize their positive contributions to our community, and wish everyone a happy Pride season.
Thank you. And I might add that trustees usually participate in that parade as well, and it's always a lot of fun and a lot of cheering. And so, we look forward to that in August. It's usually a pretty hot day, too. Okay. And you get water shot at you. I'm not going to tell you where, but anyway, it's a lot of fun. Madam Secretary-Treasurer, is there any materials not included in the packages available to the public?
Thank you, Chairperson. All materials have been included in the public board meeting package and have been published on the district's website.
And I'm looking for adoption of the agenda. Is there anything to add? So, moved by trustee Hamaguchi, seconded by trustee Wong. All those in favor? No one's opposed? Thank you. Okay. There are no presentations, briefs, or special recognitions. And this is a point where we could take some questions from the public, if there are any. And Ms. Baberstock, President of Richmond Teachers Association, thank you for asking a question.
All right. Good evening. Liz Baberstock, President, Richmond Teachers Association, and pleased to be here tonight. And I know it's budget night, so I'm actually going to ask, well, figure out how to frame a question, because that's what I do. So, when I'm reviewing the budget, and I actually really appreciate the clarity of the documents, it's, there's a lot of information in here. And so, anybody who hasn't read this, you actually should do so. It looks at the now and, of course, looking ahead to the future for Richmond. Where I'm actually focused is, I'm looking at page 47 on the package, and I'm looking at the teacher staffing. And in particular, I'm looking at the 3.0 teacher allocation for Indigenous-focused graduation requirement. And it's a one-time funding. And I suppose my question is, is did, has the board given attention to actually making this ongoing funding? The problem with one-time funding is, I don't think this is a one-time need. At this point in time, it is support for Indigenous-focused graduation requirement. But when I consider secondary schools, and the fact that we do have 10 secondary schools, I think you need to turn your attention to, how are you going to do ongoing small school supplements? And that's actually where you need to do. If you're going to have 10 secondary schools, you have to actually budget small school supplements. And so, that is one area where I have a question, because one time, it's, we need ongoing. And we need that now. And if you're not going to provide that clarity for schools going forward, then the other thing I think is, you actually have to start thinking about backing up your budgeting decisions, because staffing decisions are made in April. And so, these are probably questions you're not going to answer, but I think these are things to be thinking about. The other thing, and I, you know, as you're developing the budget, no one expects that we're going to hit a heat wave in the middle of May. And I'm not sure if you thought about that in terms of your budget, and that we may need to actually be start thinking about the fact that we are in a climate emergency. We are seeing heat events. We are seeing smoke events in times where we never expected to do that. And how are we going to prepare our schools for that? And I know that advocacy will need to be done, because the ministry doesn't allow for cooling. But if we're going to keep schools open and learning happening, we actually have to be thinking about that. And so, you invested a lot of money, and I really appreciate that, on ventilation in elementary schools. And now, we have a new thing that we have to be thinking about, because we have to keep schools open. And July now happens in May. And I think this is our future. So, those are, you know, I find questions in there, because, you know, it's thinking about small school supplements, not having one time. Think about climate change. Has some thought been given towards that? And some of the decision-making that may need to be earlier. So, those are the questions I leave tonight. But, you know, you look at this, and we're, it's so nice to be in a much better place of funding. Never can I not look at something like page 47. So, when you look at page 47, and you look at staffing, and then you go on, and you look at the Classroom Enhancement Fund. And when I look at the staffing that comes out of the Classroom Enhancement Fund, which is our win at the Supreme Court of Canada, it's 397.09 FTE. It's 15% of your budget. And I want to always thank the teachers who fought long and hard, because that is serving the learners today. So, I always like to remind people of that. Thank you.
Thank you. And it's good to remember that, because, yes, we are able to add those staff back and service our students. And trustees fought alongside you for years, and we appreciate it.
Thank you.
The, thank you for both of your questions. And, you know, we'll take, I think we have to take the teacher allocation into consideration for the next budgeting period, and then also the cooling due to climate change. You know, we have been discussing that as well. So, yeah.
Thank you, Chairperson.
Lieutenant Ryan.
Yeah. So, just a quick comment. One, I always appreciate the thoughtfulness that you bring to your comments and questions. And you've identified two important areas that we are in conversation about. I think you're aware that not only is it contemplated tonight that we pass the 3.0 FTE to support the small school and implementation of the Indigenous-focused graduation, but we've also, this year, added additional staffing to our small secondary schools to support low enrollment elective options, especially in the graduation program. So, it is something that we have worked together on, and we really appreciate your advocacy.
Thank you.
Product of working together. Thank you. Seeing no one else lined up in the gallery. Oh, there are three people in the gallery. Welcome, Mr. Sefton. Executive Report.
Thank you, Chairperson. Just wait for our PowerPoint to boot it up here.
And I probably should say, there's lots of participants online. Don't want to ignore them, but thank you.
Thank you very much. So, welcoming families to kindergarten in Richmond. During the month of May, our elementary schools warmly welcome parents and families to welcome to kindergarten events. These events provide an important opportunity for parents and caregivers to participate in kindergarten orientation and establish positive connections with the school community. By involving families, a strong foundation is created for their child's education. Our school district is excited for the future and growth of our young learners entering kindergarten in September as they embark on their educational journey. Celebrating Richmond's vibrant music community. Music in our schools is a showcase of our students' incredible musical talents at Gateway Theater. This year, over 1,000 students from 22 schools performed in categories like concert band and jazz band. The Concert Series celebrates the remarkable musical achievements of our learners and highlights the broader impact of music education on their personal development and the richness it brings to our community. Journey into exploring geometry, 2D, 3D worlds at Bing Elementary. At Bing Elementary, students explored the world of geometry through engaging activities. They constructed 2D shapes, solved shape riddles, and explored 3D shapes using nets. Reading math books, playing shape bingo, and using interactive games enhanced their learning. Through these activities, students developed a strong foundation in geometry and honed critical thinking and problem-solving skills. These immersive experiences equipped our students with valuable tools for their ongoing mathematical growth and success. Mental health advocates inspire students at Richmond Secondary. During Canadian Mental Health Association's Mental Health Week, Richmond Secondary cult ambassadors launched a powerful virtual campaign featuring influential mental health advocates, including Petra Schulz, the co-founder of Moms Stop the Harm, which raises awareness about the harms of drug use; Lisa Robinson, an expert in indigenous healing and Western medicine; Vince Saboia, who draws on personal experiences with PSD and advocates for safe environments. Their stories were shared as part of the school's hashtag My Story campaign, which encourages students to learn from the experience of mental health advocates and fosters a culture of understanding. Unlocking potential. Empowering students through assistive technology. At McKinney Elementary, Sophie, a remarkable grade-two student, has embraced the transformative capabilities of the Clover Book Pro, a portable video magnifier specifically designed for individuals with low vision. Sophie now enjoys seamless access to visual materials throughout her school day. Additionally, Sophie utilizes the iPad Pro to capture images, access digital files, and showcase her learning through innovative apps. Sophie's remarkable progress showcases the profound impact of assistive technology in a student's educational journey. Through the district's collaborative partnership with SETBC, we continue to take steps towards unlocking the potential of all students by creating inclusive learning environments where equitable opportunities pave the way for success now and into the future. Thank you, Chairperson. That's my report.
Yes. Anybody have any questions? Just wanted to note, the mental health, was it Richmond High? Yes. And presentation by Petra Schulz, Want to Stop the Harm. It's really good that we're getting, you know, some awareness around, you know, drug and addiction in our schools, and also mental health, which this board is extremely committed to. So, great presentation. Thank you. Okay, moving on. A couple of minutes of prior meetings. There's a record of an in-camera meeting of the board held Wednesday, April 26. And there's a regular, minutes of the regular meeting of the board held April 26 for approval. And I'm looking for a motion to approve trustee Larson and trustee Wong. Any discussion? All those in favor? No one's opposed? Thank you. This is arising from the prior minutes. So, we have, tonight, we approve our, or hopefully approve our annual budget bylaw with three readings. There is a report from the Secretary Treasurer attached. And Madam Secretary-Treasurer, do you want to speak to the budget?
Sure. Thank you, Chairperson. I will be brief. And my report is on pages 16, 17.
That's just someone.
And the annual budget bylaw and the associated statements are on pages 18 to 33. And pages 34 to 67 is the multi-year fiscal plan, providing detailed information on the budget process, consultation process, and also different components of the budget. So, this budget is prepared according to the public sector accounting standards, following the School Act, Budget Transparency and Accountability Act, and their related regulations and policies. The total annual budget bylaw is about $344 million, comprised of the operating fund, special purpose fund, and capital fund. So, the focuses of this year's budget is to continue providing high-quality education to all students and meet diverse student needs, provide critical support to the system, as well as aligning resource allocation with the priorities and goals of the strategic plan. So, I'd like to take this opportunity to offer my deep gratitude to the entire finance team for their work in completing the budget documents. And I also want to thank our stakeholders for providing input and feedback in the budget process. So, that's my report. Back to you, Chairperson.
And thank you to you, and echoing your gratitude to the financial department and the reports that are put forward. They're amazing, and it's a ton of work. So, thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, so, the recommendation from the Secretary Treasurer is that the Board of Education approve the 2023-24 annual budget bylaw by way of three readings. So, do I have trustees' unanimous agreement that the three readings of the annual budget bylaw take place at this meeting? Looks like we got, everybody, thank you. Okay, so, here we go. I will read the bylaw in full. "A bylaw of the Board of Education, a school district 38 Richmond, called the board to adopt the annual budget of the board for the fiscal year of 2023-2024 pursuant to section 113 of the School Act, R S B C 1996 C 412, as recommended from time to time, called the Act. Board has compiled with the provisions of, complied with the provisions of the Act, ministerial orders, and Ministry of Education and Childcare policies respecting the annual budget, annual budget adopted by this bylaw. And this bylaw may be cited as school district number 38 Richmond annual budget bylaw for fiscal year 2023-2024. The attached statement showing the estimated revenue and expense for the 2023-24 fiscal year and the total budget bylaw amount of $343,958,136 for the 2023-2024 fiscal year was prepared in accordance with the Act. Statement 2, comma, 4, and schedules 2 to 4 are adopted as the annual budget of the board for the fiscal year 2023-2024." And I am looking for a mover and a seconder for the first reading. Trustee Larson and trustee Yang. I'm calling the question. All those in favor? None opposed? That motion is, the first reading is carried. So, now, I will read the second reading of the bylaw in summary. As trustees have the full bylaw in front of you, the annual budget bylaw has been prepared in accordance with the School Act, ministerial orders, and ministry policies. Total budget for the 2023-2024 fiscal year amounts to $343,958,136. Statement 2, 4, and schedules 2 to 4 are adopted as the annual budget of the board for the fiscal year of 2023 and 2024. So, I'm looking for a mover and a seconder for the second reading. Moved by trustee Wong and seconded by trustee Yang.
I'm also moving to Debbie when you get a chance.
All right. And so, are there any questions or discussions on the budget presented? Trustee Yang.
Thank you, Chairperson. So, just a few comments. I'll be in full support of my first budget here at the Richmond School Board. And so, I'm just really glad to see that we have investments on the ground this year, rather than years prior, where we had to make some difficult decisions. And I think that's good for everybody in the system. We're seeing more FTEs due to our increased enrollment, which is good. But the flip side of that is the challenge to fill those positions. And so, we need to, you know, keep our eyes steadfast on that. I'm also glad that the Ministry of Education has increased the base grant this year for, per student funding. As always, there's always more room for more resource allocations. I've been thinking about learners with unique needs, our special education, ELL students, funding for food security, portables. These things are, you know, we need the help of our provincial government, and there's always more room to give to one of the most important public goods that we have as a society. And with our, with our surplus this year, I'm also pleased to see that equitable investment in, across all work groups and across the system holistically, to support students in classrooms. You know, in this budget, we're allocating for more custodians, more FTE teachers, allocation for Indigenous-focused graduation requirement. We're adding cultural interpreter services, more counselors for our ICY team. You know, we have a food program coordinator as the result of the food program funding from the provincial government, which is excellent. And home state assistant manager, who will help with our international students and their wellbeing. So, I think this is a very comprehensive, very fulsome package of investments that are coming down the pipeline. Not to mention all the things that we need to strengthen our district planning, things like hiring the new Richmond Project Team Director, enterprise risk analyst. These are very important positions in order to keep the system functioning from a planning perspective. And lastly, I'm just going to raise this point. I'm also glad to see that there's administrative relief at our large elementary schools. As the liaison for some of these large schools, I can tell you that administrators work tirelessly to serve, you know, disproportionately large elementary population. So, they need the help, and I'm so pleased that we're able to give them the help. And so, with that, be happy to support the budget and looking forward to moving upwards and onwards. Thank you.
Hey. And I have trustee Sargent.
Thank you very much. Just a couple of comments. I just want to comment on our process. Our process is one that is really incredible, and I'm extremely proud of it. And the involvement of our stakeholders through our budget advisory group, BOG, as we call it, is just an awesome way to be open, transparent, and inclusive. And I know this budget takes an incredible amount of work. And I know that our stakeholders and our community have opportunities to, you know, present to it and give their feedback. I really wanted to thank our Secretary Treasurer, along with her team, because I know they have done an awesome amount of work. And as a governor, I'm, it makes me very, I feel very solid in what is presented and what we've been a part of, and the workshops that we've been a part of. And the addendum that is attached to this budget, which I think started just a few years ago, is an incredible document. And the RTA president noted that. And I would just, and I know it's going on our website. I don't know if it's there yet. But for our public, it's a really short way of really getting a grasp of our budget. I'm really thankful for that. Thank you, Secretary Treasurer. And then, I'm also thankful that we are able to add this year, add positions. And many, many, many years, we have been making cuts, and it's very difficult to do. And so, this year, it feels nice that we can actually add some. But I'm also concerned that there are things that are not funded. And I'm concerned about the inflation increase that is not funded by the ministry. And that will be funded out of our operating. And I have deep concerns with, with our capital budget. Are you okay, Secretary Treasurer? I have deep concerns about our capital funding. And, you know, we'll be presenting to the select standing committee with our concerns and our additions to the next year's budget for the ministry to consider. And I think that will be also going on our website. So, it will be good for the public to know that we are advocating strongly. I mean, we're happy with this budget at this point, but there is lots of areas for concern. And our advocacy has to be strong and together with our partner groups. So, thanks again, and I will be supporting the budget and everything that is written in it. Thank you.
Okay. There. Any more comments? If not, I'll call the question. All those in favor? None opposed? Thank you. Motion's carried. So, I'll now read the third reading of the bylaw. As trustees have the full bylaw in front of you, "The annual budget bylaw has been prepared in accordance with School Act, ministerial orders, and ministry policies. The total budget for the 2023-2024 fiscal year amounts to $2,000,024,025." The total budget for the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four fiscal year amounts to three hundred and forty-three million nine hundred and fifty-eight thousand and one hundred and thirty-six dollars. Statement two, four, and schedules two to four adopted as the annual budget of the board for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four. And I'm looking for a mover and seconder for the third reading. So trustee Sergeant, are you moving? And trustee Hamaguchi? And are there any more questions or discussions? Okay, seeing none, I'm just gonna put myself on the list. I wanted to highlight our fiscal plan uh that has been put together. That is a new requirement. And um it's an amazing document that really has a lot of information about our um uh, you know, our financial plan and our district and how it works. And and I really think it's it's a good read for anybody that wants to get to know the district better. And um I want to thank uh our Secretary Treasure and her team for putting that together. And I just wanna echo um the comments from all of my colleagues. Um, and uh I'm grateful for the enrollment growth that we had because last year we were we kind of went out on a limb and um and uh made some budget decisions for that were a bit dicey. And um we pulled through and and we hoped for enrollment growth, and we kind of figured it was coming and and it did. So thank goodness for that and some funding increases from the provincial government, which we're thankful for. Um, there are still lots of cost pressures, and you know, we know that. And we worked together to come up with the best uh budget for our students and the continuation for their programs. So um, I just want to thank everybody for all their work um over the past year, especially when we start in January and and it's kind of intense up until now. So thank you so much, and I'm going to call the question. All those in favor of the third reading? None opposed? And thank you all. Um, our budget is passed, so thank you very much. Um. I have, there's one further recommendation uh that I will read and further that the board authorized the chairperson of the board, superintendent of schools, and secretary treasure to sign the two thousand three, two thousand, two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four annual budget and submit the twenty-three, twenty-four annual budget by law together with the twenty-three, twenty-four annual budget to the Ministry of Education and Childcare by June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three. And I'm looking for a mover and seconder for that one, trustee Yang and trustee Wong. Is there any questions or discussion? Okay, so I'm gonna call the question. All those in favor? None opposed? Thank you very much. Motion's carried and we have a, we have adopted the budget after all that hard work. So thank you all very much. Okay. Moving on. To um our schedule of school charges and uh there's a report from our act, uh acting deputy superintendent. After all that reading, I'm um getting talked out. Uh, and um, so there's a report uh from our deputy superintendent. Crystal Brodigan, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Um, I'm gonna share some highlights of the report that is found on page sixty-eight of your package. Um, the purpose of the school charges report is to provide background information uh on the school charges for the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four school year and to confirm that all fees charged within school district thirty-eight are in compliance with the School Act and board policy. Under the School Act, a school district can charge fees for costs associated uh with operating specialty academies, the purchase or rental of musical instruments, um the purchase or rental rental of tools, materials, or equipment for students' personal use and trades training programs for materials used in goods that are intended for stu- intended for students to take home um and other school supplies and equipment for students' personal use. The board will ensure that a schedule of charges approved um by the superintendent or designate is published by the principal of each school after consultation prior to the beginning of the school year and is provided to students and their parents' legal guardians. The schedule will include all charges known or reasonably predictable at the time of publication. Additional charges that were unknown at the time of publication may be levied with the approval of the principal. Rather than the district setting the rates and charges for all schools, each school is asked to consult uh with their school communities before notifying the district as to the fees that they have set for the following school year. This enables individual schools to best meet both their needs and those of their respective communities. And the district staff provide oversight of the fees proposed at each site, ensuring that all charges remain at a reasonable level and are relatively consistent across the district. Um, so some of the organizational impact, um when we look at elementary schools, there is the optional school supplies uh fee, which is um a service, really a supply service for parents. Um, and they're noted each year for information of trustees. Due to inflation, the cost of supplies are on average ten and a half percent higher this year or going forward than they have been um in two thousand twenty-two. So to to that end, it is recommended this year that the cost of basic school supplies be increased to thirty-three dollars from thirty dollars for the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four school year, and that's noted at the bottom of page sixty-nine of the report. Um, and given the convenience, as well as the low cost of supplies purchased centrally by the district, it's been noted that a vast majority of parents choose this district basic school supplies option. And oh, as always, parents do have the option to purchase their own school supplies if they so choose. Other elementary fees include the optional kindergarten cooking snack program fee um and student agenda fee, uh which you can see outlined in the chart that starts on page seventy for each of our elementary schools. In secondary schools, um the fees include the basic fees that covers uh costs such as school agendas, student activities, and student council fees, um advanced placement exam fees, and international baccalaureate fees, and you can see those outlined on page seventy-two of the package. Um, the School Act also enables school districts to charge for specialty academies. This uh um in in this case, this includes the McNeil incentive outdoor academy, and you can see the fees for that academy on page seventy-two. Um, and then just to conclude, um, the School Act also requires that each district have in place a policy that outlines a hardship provision. Um, and the intent of the hardship provision is to ensure that no student is denied access to essential learning opportunities due to an inability to pay. The Board of Education follows this expectation through policy one O two and ensures that students are able to participate um in those courses offered at the school to meet the general requirements for graduation. And in addition, several sources of funds exist which schools can access to support students who are unable to pay for certain items or experiences. The ability to charge school fees enables schools to offer a range of enriching experiences to their students beyond the regular curriculum. And District Policy one O two ensures that no student will be denied access due to financial hardship. As such, school district thirty-eight remains uh compliant with all School Act and Board Policy expectations regarding school charges. That is my report, and happy to take any questions.
Okay, um trustees have questions? Or the deputy superintendent, uh trustee Yang?
Thank you, Chairperson. So just a few questions for um uh Ms. Brodigan or our Secretary Treasure. Um, just pull it up here. Okay, so if I'm understanding this correctly, the only change in the fees are the school supply fees as well as uh some of the fees for uh the I B program.
There was a little increase for I B fees, yes.
Okay. Uh, and then the second question is, um it pertains to the uh elementary school supply fees. So for this school year, um I'm wondering if uh staff can let us know how much we generated through the school supply fee versus how much it was spent on the school supplies?
Sure. Yeah, so for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, um of course, the school year hasn't been completed. The uh revenues that have been collected is about three hundred fifty-three thousand dollars. Um, so so far, because we still have a couple months to go, uh is uh spent, half of it, it's been spent. Uh, so of course, because we continue to receive invoices from the vendor or from the vendors, you know, the supplier, um the suppliers of the supplies. Uh, so by the end of the school year, we're expecting that uh the expanded amount will be increasing. But based on the past three years' experience, um the uh the the expenses is pretty close to the revenues uh generated.
So uh, so there'll be surpluses for each uh previous years, is that?
Uh, yes, potentially. However, uh the complicating factors is, uh, you know, when we, when schools send in their um their orders for the school supplies, sometimes it gets mixed between the school, the student basic supplies, and also the um school generate general supplies. So sometimes things are getting mixed and charged into different account. So yeah, on the surface, there is, but um I would say perhaps not. Uh, there wouldn't be any um surpluses because what we heard from the school principal community has been, it has been, the principals are very frugal in terms of they're trying their very best to contain the expenditures within the revenues that are generated. So I would hate to speculate that there would be a lot of surpluses every year from the student um basic supply accounts.
Thank you. And and just uh one last question. Um, when was the last time we raised the school supply charges and by how much?
Right. Uh, so based on the records, what I found is uh this uh school supply, basic supply fee has been remained at thirty dollars per student since uh twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen. It could even go back further than that, but based on the record that I found today, it's been the same amount since sixteen, seventeen school year.
Thank you. Um, so with that, um, I'll, I I will have a, an amendment or a motion, but um uh, yeah, I'll leave it at that in in case anyone else had questions.
Yeah, uh trustee Sergeant.
Well, I was gonna move the recommendation, and then if um trustee Yang wanted to amend it, but I moved the recommendation.
Okay, and I'm looking for a seconder for the recommendation, trustee Hamaguchi. And so the recommend, recommendation reads that the Board of Education Richmond approved the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four schedule of school charges for elementary and secondary schools in accordance with the School Act. So
Maybe I could just speak to it a bit? Thank you.
Uh, yeah.
Well, I just moved the motion because I really feel um that there hasn't been an increase in a very long time, and I think um with what staff is bringing forward to us, I know they would have considered it with a lot of thought and detailed information. My concern, if we didn't raise it, would be that the costs have gone up dramatically for all of the the supplies. And I do feel if we don't do small increments when when needed, we would never want to come to a time when we had to do a larger, and that would affect our families. I'm also uh I feel that we should um approve this in that we don't want to download the cost to to the school supplies, and I know principals are very we've cut their supplies uh budget dramatically over the years. So I I approve this recommendation because I know there has been a lot of uh thought behind it. Thank you.
Yeah, so any more discussion, trustee Yang?
Uh, thank you, Chairperson. Uh, so with that, I'll just move my uh the following amendment. Um, uh, further that the school supplies fee for elementary schools be set at thirty dollars within the school schedule of school charges, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. And um if uh I have a seconder, I'd love to go into the rationale and uh we can go from there.
Okay, so I'm looking for a seconder for the motion for trustee Yang. I don't know if I can second. There is a seconder for calling again? Okay. Well, seeing none, I think that means it's kind of defeated at this point in time. Okay, so is there any more discussion? Uh, trustee Hamaguchi?
Um, you know, we all hate to see any kind of increase, but you know, knowing our staff, they they deal, you know, they're very aware of that and very sensitive to that. So, you know, when they come up with an increase like this, then uh I I'm confident that they're making it with the best interest of everyone in mind. Um, I'm also too, on on a sort of broader level, um in terms of trustees getting involved on decisions of increasing this by five dollars or ten dollars or whatever, reducing it or, um, you know, we're often told that our school trustee school, you know, uh trustee school that uh leave the operational stuff to staff and more of the governance. And I know we're voting on a uh uh a fee that's gonna go across the board, so it kind of covers both areas, but I'm very comfortable with what staff has come up with.
Okay, trustee Larson?
Um, I have a slightly different question, if that's okay. Um, when when um we talk about the cooking fee, for example, I'm just curious for some of our schools that host the Strong Start, um they provide snacks. Would that come out of um, it would, it would be some
It's a, that's separate, because it's a separate program from from kindergarten. Yeah.
Okay, I wasn't sure. And then just one more question, if I may. It's a real quick one. The hardship fund, that's, if I understand correctly, that would only be for school sanctioned situations. Is that correct? Or or could it be used for different sort of situations so that no one is ever left out of rad or or something like that?
That's right. So um the school hardship fund um is set up so that when a family has difficulty paying for something that is happening um that is provided by the school, so um a field trip, for example, uh the cost of a certain supply that is required, um that that hardship fund is there for that, and it has always been in place. And then this year, we've had the additional layer of the Student Affordability Fund, which has helped in lots of different ways, as you know, uh but there has always been a process in place in schools to help families uh with fees that that are not affordable for them.
Thank you. Thank you for that opportunity.
Trustee Yang.
Thank you. I'll just speak to the main motion. Um, so the I have no issues with uh most of the costs. Um, the 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 issue was raised um on these elementary school supplies fee was just on the basis of affordability. I am concerned about that. Um, and without going to uh delve into this uh too much, um, you know, I I I just think that three dollars may not seem like much um for for a regular family, but um it goes a long way, uh especially during this time uh in these challenging times where everything is going up, and um I I would hate to download that cost. Uh, and so um I have no issues again with most of these um the 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 fees. Um, but that was just what I was concerned with, and um and and I understand that we have an obligation to to pass that schedule. Um, so I will support the schedule, but um I just think it's a disservice to to families um who 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 needs to pay a little more on top of everything else that they have to pay a little more. So I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Any more discussion? Uh, yeah, I, you know, trustee Yang, I do want, I do um you know, appreciate the spirit of your motion. I think, you know, um parents do have a lot of costs, you know, downloaded from for all many different things, sports, um this, that, and the other thing, and and they they are struggling. However, um if we don't raise the fees enough to cover our expenses now, we may have to do an even bigger jump the next time, and that's always a consideration. So it's better to do it in smaller increments if you can. Um, and the other thing is, uh, as trustee Sergeant has said, in the past, we have um to balance our budgets, decreased uh supplies, um allocations to our schools. Um, and you know, more than once, um we've we've decreased the supplies budget and asked our schools to hold back on spending because we were getting close to the line. and asked our schools to hold back on spending because we were getting close to the line. So in the, you know, in consideration that, I would, I would support the three dollar jump, but taking into consideration that every dollar is, is, can be difficult for families that struggle. And, but it's good to know that we have the hardship fund and that we can do things for those families. So I support as well the school charges and I'm, so I'm going to. The motion was moved and seconded and made a boo-boo, I think I said it was trustee Hamaguchi, it was trustee Wong.
Yeah.
So.
You just beat me.
Yeah. So I'm gonna, I, I call the question, all those in favor? None opposed? Okay, emotions carried. Thank you. And new business. We have our Director of International Education to bring forward a report about regarding the Richmond International Education Tuition Fee Increase. And there is also a recommendation.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you.
Mr. Sean Sefton.
Sorry, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for including RIE in your agenda this evening. Yes, I'm here briefly to, to speak briefly to the recommendations submitted to you in writing regarding a, a recommended tuition fee increase for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year. And that recommendation is specifically that the board approved a tuition fee increase for students registered in RIE, Richmond International Education, from fifteen thousand dollars Canadian per year to sixteen thousand dollars Canadian per year effective September of two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five. Including in the recommendation included some background information, which looked at specifically the tuition, a program tuition fees for two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five of our peer programs in Metro Vancouver. And it's our contention, I believe, that our tuition fee requires a small bump up to reflect the quality of our program, but also to keep us competitive with our peers. It's our recommendation, our contention, that this fee increase will have little to no impact on the marketability of our program, as many of our peer programs have already increased their tuition fee for the upcoming school year, or will do so in the following year. And it's our contention as well that it's important for the board to keep pace with the fee structures of our peers. Consultation, as always, revolved and included discussion with internally within our RIE team, our finance colleagues, as well as with senior team, of course. It's also a recommendation, it's believed, or a recommendation for the fee increase will result in additional revenue from international education programs in the district, which will offset inflation pressures and market conditions, as well as afford the board greater flexibility in delivering educational programs for all Richmond students. The tuition fee adjustment suggested will further serve to support the provision of financial support to the board while continuing to position Richmond within the region as a strong and desirable program. Our E staff continue to hold a positive outlook for international education programs in our district as for the next three-year cycle, for sure. And we look forward to the support of the board to continue to support us as we continue as a program to evolve and thrive. That concludes my recommendation for this evening.
Any questions or discussion for, let's just. Oh, I see trustee sergeant.
Yeah, thank you, trustee Blotney. I know it's hard to keep remembering those. Appreciate that. Thank you. I'd be prepared to move the recommendation, but I just, my question was before that, which you kind of, well, you did answer, but I just want to clarify again. You know, will the increase deter anyone? And I think you said, no, there wouldn't be any. Because I know we're rebuilding, and I like that we're in the same level with, with most of Metro. But if we went a little under, would that mean they'd come to us instead? And I'm hearing that's not the case. Okay, so I, I would be prepared to move the recommendation when you're ready, trustee Blotney. Thank you.
So it's been moved by trustee sergeant, seconded by trustee Yang. Is there any discussion? Okay, seeing none. I'm going to call a question. All those in favor? I don't see anyone opposed, so the motion is carried. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Presentation. Okay. Another opportunity for questions from the public, if there are any, and are there any online? No. Okay, thank you. Okay, standing committee reports. Audit committee, chairperson Yang.
Uh, thank you, chairperson. Just give me one second here. Sorry about that. Thank you. The meeting was held Tuesday, May second. Next meeting date is to be determined.
Education committee, chairperson Larson.
A meeting was held on Wednesday, May seventeenth, and the next meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, June the fourteenth. That's, yeah.
Okay, and Facilities and Building Committee, Chairperson Hamaguchi.
This is the April fifth meeting for information. Meeting was held Wednesday, May third. The next and final meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, June seventh, at four thirty PM. Thank you.
And Finance and Legal Committee, Chairperson Sergeant.
Thank you very much. A meeting was held on, it seemed like a busy day on May seventeenth. And the next meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, June fourteenth at ten AM. Thank you.
Yeah, and Policy Committee. It's myself, and I have a few recommendations here. So bear with me. The first recommendation is on page eighty-three of the package. And the recommendation is that the Board of Education approve the attached revised policy one O one and one O one R strategic planning in accordance with Board Policy Two-O for creation and revision of policy and regulations. And at the January twenty-fifth public meeting, the board approved one O one and one O one R for entry into the stakeholder process. And the stakeholder review process was from January twenty-sixth to March sixth. And there was no additional feedback, but there was some stakeholder input that was received and incorporated into the, to the draft revised policy prior to it being entered into the stakeholder process, so. And it has been in discussion at Policy Committee since June two thousand and twenty-two. So we believe that it is ready to be approved. So it has. I'm looking for mover and seconder, trustee Yang and trustee Wong, is there any discussion? So all those in favor? Oh, no? Yes, no? Okay, all those in favor? Opposed? Emotions carried. Okay, that's one. There is also a notice of motion for policy one O one, board bylaw operations attached. And so the notice of motion that is in accordance with Board Policy Two-O for creation, revision of policy and regulations. It's a notice of motion that a recommendation will be presented to the June twenty-first two thousand and twenty-three public meeting of the Board of Education to approve the two O one and two O one bylaw board operation. So that will be on the June twenty-first meeting. And policy's been dizzy. We have a notice of motion. Give me one second to get my page, one sixty-seven. Agenda. Oh, gosh, for some reason. One oh seven, sorry. Me a minute. Okay, so a notice of motion to the June twenty-first meeting at the Board of Education and in accordance with Board Policy Two-O for creation and revision of policy regulations. This is a notice of motion that a recommendation will be presented to the June twenty-first public meeting of the Board of Education to approve policy three-one-one and three-one-one R, the Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy, which our secretary treasurer has worked very hard on. So that will be coming to the next meeting. And another notice of motion for. One second. Notice of motion for. And I won't read all the Gobba De Goo, but it is a motion to approve policy six-two-one and six-two-one R, financial planning and reporting, and policy six-three-one R, accumulated surplus and capital reserves. And that again has been our secretary treasurer that has been working very hard on those policies. So next time, we have three motions coming forward from Policy Committee. And a meeting was held on Monday, May fifteenth. And the next meeting is scheduled for Monday, June nineteenth at eleven AM. That'll be our final meeting in the year, so. Thank you for bearing with me. The Board Committee and Representative Reports, as Council Board Liaison Meeting Committee meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, September thirteenth. And B C's School Trustees Association Annual General Meeting was held on April twenty-seventh to thirtieth, and there was lots of motions with advocacy. And so we've given B C S T A their Board of Directors their mandate for trustees across the province. And it was an interesting one because there were a few glitches with the technology. And we went back to the old way of doing things. Putting up our hands. So, but there was lots of good learning as well at the annual general meeting. And I don't know if trustee, any other trustees have any comments, but it was definitely time well spent. Thank you to everybody. B C P C, there is nothing and no correspondence, and that's it. So I'm looking for a motion to adjourn. Trustee Yang and trustee Larson, all those in favor? No one's opposed. Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for attending our meeting, and those online, too.